I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the March 2nd regular board meeting of the Marshalltown Community School District. Welcome to all of you who are here with us this evening, and welcome also to those of you who will be watching us on delayed broadcast. Allow me to introduce the people at the table with me. From my right, we have Bob Untiet. Sean Heitman. From the left, we have Mike Miller and Sarah Faltis. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold. She is the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schutie, the Superintendent of Schools, and I'm Bee Niblak. There is a pink sheet on the speaker's table for you if you would like to address the board this evening. Please sign up, and you will speak during our public comments section, which is directly after our consent agenda. You'll be given five minutes to speak, but according to board policy, the board members will not be able to respond to your comments, but we thank you for them. Please read with me the mission of the Marshalltown Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. And stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, we had one addition. There's a recommendation for denial of an open enrollment request for the remainder of this year as well as next year that we added.
May I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Miller, Faltis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries five. Mr. Siders.
Well. Well, as you guys can see from the decorations here on the table, we have our MHS boys bowling team who had an extremely impressive performance at the state level here recently, including Lucas Kramer, who won first overall in 3A, which is extremely impressive. And I'll let them come on up and tell you more about the experience. We're glad to have them.
It comes out, but you can't go too far with it.
Okay. Well, this is good, I guess. So, all right, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak today in front of you guys. It's with great honor that we're here today. You know, me personally, coming from a school last year that did not have a bowling program, to being able to come here and have a bowling program has been just a tremendous experience this year, and I can't say enough about this team and what they've accomplished. So, and you're going to hear from some of them in a second, but I know we're here for the boys program, but I do want to give a shout out to our girls team as well. They were the conference champs this year and just had tremendous support for the boys team. I was very impressed with when we did the send off for the, for the boys team. The girls were there supporting. When we were at the state meet last week, the girls were front and center, leading all the cheers every time these guys were knocking down all the pins. So, that was great to see. From a personal standpoint, I bowled in the Corey Brown Memorial Tournament last week, and you had to have one 18 and under on your team. And so, of course, I asked Coach DJ, I was like, hey, can you find me a high school kid for my team? And he's like, yep, yep, I got you Kylie. And of course, two of my buddies who bowled collegiately in college were like, is this girl any good? I'm like, well, she was the conference champ, so she's pretty good. So, but that was just great to see all the bowlers at that as well. One thing that's been really refreshing this year for me as, as the athletic director is just seeing the amount of sportsmanship that's displayed at bowling meets. You know, Lucas, our senior captain, our, our individual champion bowled a 300 a few months ago when Atoma was in town. And of course, our kids were excited, but it was really cool how the Atoma kids were the first to congratulate Lucas. And then the other day at the state meet, the Cedar Rapids Prairie kid on the lane next to us bowled a 300, and it was the same thing. Our kids were the first over to congratulate him. So, to see the amount of sportsmanship at the bowling meets and just the excitement has been just a breath of fresh air from an athletic director's standpoint. So, that's really cool to see. As you see up here, too, you probably recognize some Marshalltown kids, and, but we have a great representation of surrounding schools as well. We have South Tama, West Marshall, East Marshall, and GMG. And I know the sharing agreement contracts ultimately come to you guys on the board, so we're thankful for your support on that. And like you said, like I said, we have a great representation of a lot of schools up here, so that's really cool. Of course, we, we hosted district bowling as well last week, or a couple of weeks ago out at Wayward Social, and we're thankful for the support that we have with the bowling alley to be able to have that facility to use. And of course, just, it was a great opportunity to showcase our community to have the district meet as well. So, I want to introduce you to Coach DJ here, and we also have some great volunteer coaches, Coach Peterson, so we're thankful for him as well. So, you're going to hear from DJ and our captain, Lucas Kramer. So, thank you.
Wow, that's funny. Okay. I just want to kind of reiterate what Ryan said there. I really appreciate the, the support that the board has shown our program over the last several years. I know that this is only my second year with the team, but the fact that we're able to grow our youth program to what you see in front of you now, to a runner-up championship caliber team, although we fell a little short of that, it's, it's nice to have the support of the school board to have that there. One school you forgot was BCLUW. It happens. But, no, it's been a great, a great experience for me for the last two years, and I look forward to doing it some more. We are losing some senior leadership this year. Like you said, we'll talk to Lucas in a second, but we have three sophomores on this team, and then the alternate was also a sophomore this year. They're all very, very good bowlers, and I expect us to be right back in the same position this, this time next year. So, he pointed out Dustin Peterson, our, my volunteer assistant coach, very fortunate to have him on, just a very good coach, not probably bowling necessity, but necessarily, but coach. He can coach youth, and that's what's, to me, sometimes more important than the actual sport. So, I will go ahead and pass it off to Lucas here. He can say a few words. And real quick, I guess, let's make some introductions. Over here behind Lucas is Dimitri Furno. He's a sophomore from South Tama. Xander Prophet, back in the back, he's a sophomore here in Marshalltown. Did I say Prophet? I'm sorry. Pickett, Xander Pickett. Hunter Dannen, senior from GMG. Lucas Kramer, Marshalltown. Dylan Cooper from GMG. Logan Prophet from, where are you from? BCLUW. And then Dustin Peterson. So, this was this year's iteration. Thirty-nine pins is what we lost by, and it's, it was close. We were up by 20 going into our Baker set, and we actually bowled above our average Baker-wise, but West, Waterloo West just bowled better, and there's nothing you can do about that. We can't play defense in bowling, so we sure would have liked to, but we couldn't. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Lucas and have him say some things, but thank you again.
So, on the past four years on my team, I think, during my freshman year, I knew I was coming to a powerhouse program. Ever since my brother bowled back, he graduated in 2013. He tied for runner-up individually in 2012, and I did that in 2018. So, able to wear the state championship hat makes me feel good, like I can just brag to him, be like, huh, I won state, you didn't. But on a more, like, serious note, I'm really glad I got to spend this year, my senior year, with these guys. I wouldn't have traded them for anyone. It's been a, it's been a great experience this year and over the past four years. The support from the entire town that we have with this bowling program is, honestly, it's kind of insane. Like, I go to these meets at different schools, and they barely have any fans show up. We come to our home meets, place is packed, and it's awesome to see, and I'm glad we have the support of the town. And I'm glad DJ was able to take over the program my junior year. He, he took the program, didn't have much experience last year, and then this summer, me and him talked nonstop basically about bowling because he wanted to improve the program in any way possible, and I'm glad I could be a captain for his team, and he started steering the team in the right direction, and I feel like there'd be a really strong team for his state title next year. That's all I have.
Congratulations to all of you.
Yes. Thank you.
Hey, Lucas. So, is there, is there, there's somebody at the TR that you've got to know, because the pictures you get in the TR are like really huge. Have you noticed that?
Yeah.
I mean, you're like an eight by 12, like, twice a week.
Yeah, it's, it's honestly awesome.
You don't have any family members that work there or anything?
Uh-uh.
Good for you. Congratulations.
I, the, after the state meet, I bought the paper in the morning, and then once I got to school, I opened it up, I see the huge picture of me there. I'm like, this is awesome.
Good job.
Thank you.
So, a couple of things I just wanted to mention. I had the opportunity to get over a couple of bits of a couple of your guys' meets, and then, of course, over the years that I've been here, three and a half years, I've been to a few, and as was mentioned earlier, the camaraderie and the team, the together as a team that both the boys and girls present is extraordinarily, quite honestly. And the other thing is, and I talked on the radio about you guys a little bit this morning, I said, you know, it's a matter of reloading year in and year out with this program. I mean, you guys are state contenders pretty much every year, and so much, I mean, skill is a big part of it, psyche and psychological is a big part of it. To get second in state's an amazing feat. I know it wasn't what you were, you were trying to go for that goal, and I think the first year I was here, I was talking to the bowlers or golfers about that, too, that, you know, it's a hard thing to accomplish, but I truly believe that it's kind of, you know, just like districts had a different leader for us, and state champion, conference champions, it's like interchangeable parts, and that's what it takes, because everybody's going to have good and bad days, but if you got people of your guys' caliber that are day in and day out doing your best, good things are going to happen. So, as excited as we are for you guys to have got second, for you to be a state champion, we're even more excited to see what next year brings with the kids that are coming back and the new ones coming in. So, congratulations on a phenomenal season.
Thank you.
Yep.
If, you're welcome to take it when you're ready.
That's cool, though. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Yeah. You better take it. Me might want a piece.
I'm sure I could bowl a hundred. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections from anyone from the minutes of February 17th? February 24th? Are there any items of note and personnel? Looking at interagency agreements, we have a student teaching letter of agreement with Western Governors University. We have the Bobcat High School readiness indicators. We have an agreement between Marshalltown School District and the Hour Department of Human Services. RSP and Associates Project Proposal in the amount of $6,500 to $7,000, or an address locator tool. We have interagency contracts for two special education students, one to Woodward and Granger and one to Waterloo. We have two open enrollments out for this year. For next year, one in and six out, and one denial. Are there any items of note in the bills?
There are.
Okey dokey.
I just wanted to point out for our new board members, because we had a great question regarding tuition payments to other school districts, and typically how we bill out and we receive that revenue is after the first semester and after the second semester. So, that's why this is the first time that you're seeing those tuition payments in the
We have a donation from the Dennis and Michelle Brown family in the amount of $4,029.20 for the high school Boys and Girls Track Program for warm-up attire. We have three filing cabinets declared obsolete and donated. Are there any questions about the consent agenda?
Bee, could I make a comment about the consent agenda? And it's because you brought up the thing about tuition payments to other schools and the open enrollments. Theron sent something in his board news and notes, it's been, I think, two weeks ago now, that ranked the top elementary schools in Marshall County, and I, I didn't know this and was super proud to hear about it, that there are, there are 11 elementary schools in all of Marshall County, and the three top ones, number one, number two, and number three, are all right here in Marshalltown. And it's a point of pride that we ought to, Fisher, Woodbury, and Lenahan are ranked one, two, and three for elementary schools in the county, and it's something that we ought to be very proud about, and we ought to talk about a lot, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Heitman, Miller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries five, zero. Anybody on the pink sheet?
Nope.
Okay. Ladies, got here just in time, Diana. Lucky you.
I'm a little sick, so I'll try not to cough the whole time. Okay. The first thing we're going to talk about is step. We made our final grant decisions on February 24th, and then we'll have a big award ceremony to hand out the checks to the nonprofits on March 24th, and we were able to help out six of the nonprofits. The high school girls track team is bringing back the Saturday Fuel tradition. The girls will have an early morning practice most Saturdays, then we will eat delicious breakfast made by the parents. The girls and the coach are very excited to bring back this tradition.
Will you have coffee cake, too?
That's a prom planning update. The theme is "The Roaring Twenties," and you guys can read the quote from Emily Manus, Our senior class, 200 out of the 336 of us have a job along with our high school classes, and some people also have college classes and different clubs and sports, so I thought that was really good to hear.
How did you get that information?
Mrs. Ravolo. So, last Saturday, we had another Saturday Academy where students who are struggling in classes or don't know how to do their homework will come in on Saturday through 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and several teachers do attend and help out the students. Science Bound seniors, we will begin our oral justification as we've already started doing it, meeting up in the library. As some of you may remember, Science Bound students receive a full tuition scholarship from Iowa State. There are 14 of us in this group, and the quote that you see above is our legacy quote, so we have to talk about how this quote fits with us and how we can represent this in our, not only our organization, but also in the high school.
And you're all doing the presentation together as a group?
Yes. It's due March 18th, in front of everyone. ISU trip, Science Bound, all Science Bound students attended a Saturday trip on February 29th, so Saturday. The ISU trip is when we regularly go to Iowa State and participate in activities that the Science Bound organization provides for us, to choose for a major or get in, get more experience in different majors, see what we are more interested in. There were, there was also a writing workshop for eighth graders who will, are doing their paper to get into the high school program, and seniors who are needing help in doing their oral justification. The youth art, me and several other of my classmates were featured in this exhibit, but it, the opening reception was on February 29th, and the quote you see there was from a student, a senior, who also got their work into the exhibit, so if you'd like to read that.
Okay. The next slides are Carmen's slides, so we don't have very many notes on them, but we have some. The XLP students will have the chance to visit Grinnell Neuroscience Lab on two separate days, March 4th and March 5th. Band has a Florida trip. Their loading for the trip will take place March 6th with loading at 3:00 and the departure at 4:00.
So, the display case will have a new display instead of the Love Locks from Paris that we have previously covered. It will now be featuring Mardi Gras. It's still covered by the French Club and French students. I shouldn't get us many notes about that, but there, I think there's going to be a quiz bowl for the XLP students, and also, they're going to have a school-in-first workshop.
Yeah. Okay. I'm not sure on this one, but I think the physics class will take a trip to ISU on Thursday, March 5th. Sorry, we didn't have any notes for her.
Questions for our representatives? Thank you very much, ladies. And thank you to the individuals who judged the art fair. Dr. Stevenson, Dr. Schutie, Mr. Heitman. Anyone else? Thank you to them.
Before you folks is the, are the documents for the employee handbook and then the six appendices, and so just really briefly, I wanted to speak to this. So, it's, it wasn't great that we don't, we've never really had an employee handbook that's been applicable to all employees. That's something that we should have had a while ago, but due to many reasons, it was never developed fully. The previous HR Director, Anthony Spaghetis, had started to work on one, which is great, which is what I really used to develop the current one that's before you, but I'm excited to announce that we do have in front of you an employee handbook that is applicable to all employees, all staff members of the district, and so it covers a lot of basic practices, practices and policies that we have here. And then, and like I said, that's applicable to all staff members. And then we have six appendices for this employee handbook, and each appendix covers a certain employee group. For the, the five collective bargaining units, what you'll find in those appendices are truly the contract language that was removed due to Chapter 20, and so the, the information, those appendices obviously are only applicable to those groups, and it's 90, not, well, it's almost, it is 100% really the language that came from those contracts that was removed, and the only edits that were made were some redundancies, for example, in some FMLA section or some maternity leave sections. There was some redundant language because we have FMLA that covers that, and so it was, there was no need to have additional language that was covering exactly what we follow for the federal law. And then some sections were removed that spoke to dues deductions because of Chapter 20 changes. Other than that, the appendices for each group is almost entirely the contract language that existed prior to this year. And then the, there's another appendix for the secretarial group, and they are not a collective bargaining unit, but that language was pulled from an existing handbook that they used to have that hadn't been updated in quite some time, but that language was pulled, excuse me, from their existing handbook. So, before you is, again, the handbook that's applicable to everybody, and then six appendices that cover the employee groups. This has been vetted by union leadership. It's been vetted by the full administrative team, and then it was also vetted by all, I sent it to all secretaries, since we're currently working on getting their representation group going. I sent it to all secretaries for comment, and at this time, I haven't heard of any additional feedback or suggestions, but was, many edits were made after I received feedback from folks. So, it is before you today for approval. I will tell you, it is very standard when you look across other school districts and even the private sector, as far as the sections and what it covers. It's, it's quite standard, but I welcome any questions you may have before it's, for you, before you for approval.
So, is that in with board leadership as well?
Correct, yeah.
And I just want to commend Dr. Ryan for all the time effort she put in in her short tenure to take what had been worked on for the prior year and, and getting it to a point of readiness to put out. I know that there was a lot of questions about when are we going to get this, when are we going to get this, from the MEA especially, but we wanted to get it as right as we could, and obviously, it's a living document that will continue to probably evolve a little bit over time as things change, but we will continue to work through our respective groups to, to find hopefully mutual agreement on most of those changes that happened.
Thank you.
Is there anything in the document that employee groups or specific people had, like, super bad heartburn with?
Nothing comes to mind. I do not believe so.
Okay.
I think the, the comments that I received were really helpful. Some of them were just correction of the way, of the practice, like, the text said one thing, but in practice, that's actually not how it's done, and then I would confirm with, with those folks that this is in fact how you, how it works. And, and so, most of the comments that I received were actually helpful edits and suggestions instead of frustrations.
Okay. Well, a year ago, we talked a lot about pulling things out of things that were being negotiated and pulling them into the handbook. And so, were there any employee groups that had issue with what actually got into the handbook as it being substantially different or worse than what they negotiated prior to?
No, because literally, it was a copy and paste. It was a copy of the contract language that had been removed, literally a copy and a paste, and like I said, I think the only edits were some redundancies in the maternity leave section, and some of the language was, I mean, to be frank, quite sexist as well, and not just inaccurate, but just outdated antiquated language. And then, like I said, some changes about dues. We removed all the information about insurance since it was outdated and everything is on our website, so nothing that really comes to mind.
Great. Thanks.
And I know that in the early stages of development, we looked at other model handbooks and districts, and that was mainly under Anthony, and tried to capture from them the best of what they had that reflects stuff that we didn't have in language, but we had in practice, and so, just trying to get, because a lot of it's about expectations and roles and responsibilities and that sort of thing that we have for employees, so we wanted to get on paper as best we could, those types of things that might come up from time to time to help provide clarity or direction to employees.
And hopefully, it's seen as a really good resource. That was a really pointed question that we sent, especially the principals, was, you know, what are the questions that you're getting most frequently? And then I sat back and reflected, what are the most common emails that come through me? And so, hopefully, what's contained in that handbook is going to be a great resource to push people to, and especially new employees as well, and as a annual reminder for existing employees of our practices.
Other questions for Dr. Ryan? May I have a motion to approve the staff handbook and appendices as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Untiet, Faltis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
[laughing]
Tonight, I'm here to share an update with you. Annually in March, our board calendar shows that we talk about curriculum purchases and curriculum adoptions, and try to keep you abreast of that through my weekly, some more too, what's going on, because these committees get formed back in the fall. Usually we solicit input and, or invitations in September, and then the committees start meeting in October. So it's really, it's really challenging for us to come to you with adoption information in March. But our goal we've set for ourselves is to share with you April 6th for information and then April 20th for approval for expenditure. So we can quickly turn around and get these things ordered, purchased and, and invoiced within this fiscal year. So this year, we do have a seven-year adoption cycle that you've, most of you that are on the board have seen before, that covers the gamut of everything that we would buy materials or resources for in K through 12. And this year, this fiscal year, Pam Brewer-Michael is leading the 712 team as Curriculum Professional Development Leader through 712 ELA, and Erica Fenders is leading the K-6 team through social studies. And just some highlights that you might have picked up on in the document. The 712 ELA adoption is probably our second, first, or it'll be interesting to see how it comes in compared to K-6, but it's one of our top two or three adoptions in terms of number because our students are required to take four years of English for graduation. So we are serving in any given year, every single student at the high school, as well as our seventh and eighth graders. And as you can see, we have a very rich path, different pathways that students can take, whether they're in dual language or honors. And then lots of electives at the high school level, as well as dual credit classes, which is kind of what Director Miller was referring to before. I mean, when we sit down and look through all of the things our students are able to do in English Language Arts when they're at Marshalltown High School, it's, it's pretty amazing. And so we'll have, next year, we'll have some pre-AP work going on in our ninth and 10th grade honors ELA, which will position the students really well to take, they can take two years of AP English as junior and seniors, there's two different courses, if AP is their thing, and they're thinking of going to a university where that's very important, and/or a combination of taking dual credit comp classes that are offered at our high school through MCC. And then there's also lots of different electives. So they're, that group is hard to pull together, but because of coaching and varying things, but this committee meets generally once a month in the afternoon, they get a substitute. We have a seventh grade rep, eighth grade, and then four from the high school. We also have voices from English ESL Department and the Special Ed, and instructional coaches are there too. So they just, most recently, viewed their top three finalists last Thursday, and we're getting closer, we're down to two at this point, and we hope to make a decision here in the next couple of weeks. And then the second adoption, and just kind of a ballpark, you don't have numbers on here, but our goal was to keep that under, that adoption under $350,000, which serves our, you know, over 2,000 seventh through 12th grade students during that six or seven years of the adoption. The second one is K-6 Social Studies, which has been led by Erica Fenders. That group's a little bit different. It has 13 committee members. We send an open invitation out at K-6, and it meets monthly from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the annex usually, and we kind of have a nice mix of people. We don't have all buildings represented or all grade levels, but that's pretty typical for our committees. Some years we get lots, and some years we don't have as much interest. So they've been studying the new Iowa Social Studies standards, which really aren't that new at this point. They've been around for a few years. We're actually up against a pretty tight timeline of June 30th, when we have to have the new Iowa Social Studies standards implemented in our district. So we were able to get that done with secondary last year with financial literacy and the 712 social studies, and now we'll be doing the same with elementary. And as you may know or remember, from your years in elementary school, we don't have lots of time that's devoted to elementary social studies. We have roughly 25 to 30 minutes per day, and it's on a cycle with science. So it's not every day, as well as health. So due to that, we will use a combination of free materials. The state's done a really nice job of making some ready-made units that we'll be able to access. We also have junior achievement, financial literacy lessons, and our sixth grade social studies will actually align with what the seventh and eighth graders are doing. So that adoption will cap at roughly 75,000, but if my estimates are correct, we'll come in a little bit underneath budget for that one, of which the 70,000, about 25,000 is to purchase materials for our sixth graders, because they use a typical textbook in sixth grade like they would in seventh and eighth. So we'll be back in April with more information.
Questions for Lisa? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Bring out the books. Come join us. Central office.
Just kidding, I'm back.
[laughing] Sit tall.
I'm up. Terrible Habit Number 13 is coming unprepared to board meetings. I don't know why in the world B assigned me this particular topic, but this is a topic of a board member who had a very busy week and was not able, did not choose to read their board packet ahead of time, and decided that they were going to read it when everything else was going to go on. But the board president saw this and called out the board member, again, again, I'm not sure why the board president assigned this to me, and took a 10-minute break of the whole meeting so that this board member could beef up on what they were supposed to be beefed up on before the meeting. And so, not that B would ever do that to any of us. So anyway, it, it gives several choices of what this board member ought to do, five choices of what the member ought to do. There's only one choice here that's the right choice, and that is apologize privately to your fellow board members and the superintendent and promise it'll never happen again, and recommit yourself to making sure that you are prepared ahead of the board meeting. So lessons learned, a couple sentences I read here. When a lack of preparation becomes a habit, in this case, a terrible habit, it's time for a board member to step aside and step down. That they promised their citizens that they would come prepared to these sorts of meetings, and they need to come prepared. And so I guess that's all I have about that one.
Any other further comments?
I thought it was interesting, and the superintendent's lessons learned that it got talking about laws specifying, you know, in some places specifying how many board meetings a board member could miss without being subject to replacement, which I don't believe there's any such law in Iowa, but, you know, we have from time to time had people that have either chosen not to run due to time commitments, or have chosen to step off maybe at a certain time when they were going to have to miss meetings. I think the fact that we do our meetings electronically now, you know, for many years in Marsh Town, in fact, Marsh Town was one of the first to go digital with their board agendas and that sort of thing, affords an opportunity to stay on top of what's happening at board meetings, because every now and then, people are going to have to miss one for, you know, illness or work-related reasons or vacations or what have. And I think there's still a great opportunity to kind of stay in touch with what's going on and what's happening with the communication tools that we have and the board report that Adam puts out shortly after the board meetings as well.
Okay. Terrible Habit 14 was called Doing Too Much Homework. And the situation here was a board member had a particular interest in grounds management, building, not necessarily buildings and grounds, but it sounds like grounds in general, had a, a real concern with pesticides being used and other things like that. So this particular board member had done quite a bit of homework and research over time about the direction that the board member felt the district should go. And then after lots of prodding to the board president and superintendent, it did become an agenda item. And then at the board meeting, it appears that the board member pulled out lots of policies and like a, a basic proposal, like the product was finished and presented it when given the microphone, and felt very satisfied in doing so, as if he or she had done, done the job for everyone else in, in that situation. But in essence, it left all the fellow board members feeling broadsighted because they weren't able to give their view. The person was taking on the role of everyone on the board. The other board members felt out of the loop, and that's not what you want to do. You want to be a team member. So in looking at that situation, the basic essence is don't start with the final product. Don't come to the board table with something already created that hasn't been vetted or, or worked on as a team. And then the how-to, I guess, how would you get that done? This board member could have had meetings with the superintendent one-on-one, just to kind of discuss what he or she had been learning. The board member could have offered to be on a committee or be part of a committee that wanted to study this further. And then the board member maybe should have kept that product until it was time for everyone to have equal footing at the table, meaning you're getting public input, you've had a committee that's maybe sharing, and then the board member could share. So lots, lots of errors were made along the way by the board member. And I guess in terms of lessons learned too, I thought it stuck, they keep coming, this is Habit 14, but I at least can think of three examples of where it says, the role of the board president is really important in this situation to give guidance to board members so that they don't make these mistakes more than one time. And then also that the importance of the superintendent finding or encouraging board members to go to trainings that are offered that maybe would have headed something like this off before the person did all that work.
Thank you. Other comments? Input?
Obviously, at the ground level, we would start by either having a committee or a discussion that the Buildings and Grounds Director would be a part of. So we'd know all the ins and outs of, of that as well. And this kind of felt like, you know, developing something new that hadn't been in the existence, whether it was administrative regulations or policies. So, yeah, we would definitely want to go through some sort of vetting process before it, you know, a policy just showed up unannounced at the board table.
But what, can I riff on this a little bit? This is kind of jazz, but imagine that Sarah wants to have an elective on like pharmacy education in the high school, right? Would she, who would she begin a conversation like that with? You?
Probably the high school principal. While me and, and the board president, then we would figure out how to have that.
Say process, process, process. So maybe it would die, maybe it wouldn't, but yeah, okay.
The board member's responsibility is to speak directly to the superintendent for any issues. The first step has to be visiting with the superintendent.
And probably like in that case, I would involve Lisa as well as the director of instruction, you know, since it's a class request. Then we'd try to figure out how to have some discussion at the high school level, since it's a high school course. And so Pam Brewer-Michael might be involved as a secondary CPDL, and we'd have a lot of people that we'd talk to and try to figure out.
I think, I think for me, what it was is the, sort of what I think of as a tension of positive values, right? Like, I really like throwing Sarah under the bus this way hypothetically, but it's just that all of us do come to this thing with certain values and, and hopefully some sense of vision, but how do we engage that productively is the, I think you've said that.
Jan has the next one. Did she visit with anyone to cover for her? Alrighty.
Wait, which one? That was which?
She had Habit 15. Representing your supporters. And the scenario starts out with a board member having a, what she called a kitchen cabinet meeting every month with her supporters. And they would talk about all the things that needed to be on the agenda and the solutions to those agenda items, and how she should present it, that things should be handled at the board meeting. Obviously, she was merely representing the individuals in her neighborhood, her supporters. And the most important thing that board members need to remember is that you represent everyone in the district. Those who voted for you, those who didn't vote for you, and those who can't stand you. You represent them all. It was really pretty straightforward that the board member had just represented a small segment of the population, and that we need to understand that we represent all. And that our decisions need to be based on what is best for all the children of the district and not just your neighborhood or your kitchen cabinet. Any other comments about that particular, it's kind of a straight word one, but... Okay. Dr. Schutte?
Bob, I think you were going to cover this.
Yes, I'm Terrible Habit Number 16. Thank you. This is a, a discussion of minimizing public input. The scenario is that there is a discussion of budget priorities, and there's a number of speaker cards already filled out, and it looks like it will be, you know, quite a lengthy period of time to hear everyone. So what, what is decided in the midst of the meeting is to exercise a prerogative in this board's hypothetical existence to limit discussion to 30 minutes, which causes some amount of chaos among the, the folks who are there. And what the, the author of the book recommends is, is to look at a number of alternatives that include letting everyone speak, even if it takes all night, asking people to limit, limit comments to two minutes, moving the item to the end of the agenda, or cutting off the public input, as was written here, after 30 minutes, but suggests that remaining people send comments in an email message or letter. And it notes it's a tough situation, because in this scenario, the 30-minute limit was a part of the rules that could be used, but what the author of the book recommends is that we allow for as much input as people want to give. Sort of an addendum to that, though, the superintendent's lesson is that the, the board chair and the superintendent could be considering the importance of items in the, in agendas like, like this, which could produce a lot of, of public input or desire for public input by keeping the rest of the agenda light, or by even scheduling a separate public hearing. Is that?
A special board meeting just to talk.
A special, okay, all right, all right. So, so that's the, that's the, the essence of this, is this thing.
I think that last year's springtime brought us very lengthy public comment sections. And we did not limit the number of people who could speak. We still stuck by our board policy of five minutes. And we could have asked people to stop at that point if they had gone over the five minutes, but everyone was respectful to the five-minute limit. And some of our meetings were very long, but allowed everyone to speak to the And some of our meetings were very long, but allowed everyone to speak to the issue that wanted to share something. So we do have policies in effect that impact that. Other comments?
I had that same reflection, Bea, when I was reading this. I was like, oh, that was like last year when we had so much, I think it was the last, in the spring where we had people concerned about insurance, I believe. But it made me think too, I think at the end where they were talking about the importance of agenda planning and how to be, maybe have some vision, I suppose, about what could be a complicated issue and the role that those meetings that the two of you have with Sean, you know, when you're studying the agenda the week before about what could be a topic that's going to bring people to the meeting and how that might impact the timing. And I think those are kinds of things that maybe people don't see behind the scenes about the strategy involved in how you schedule a meeting and the topics you put on the agenda because you don't want to be put in a position like this woman and talk about trial by fire, right? It sounded like this was the first time she got to sit in the big chair with the gavel. And then it was, it just.
It's always so much fun, those meetings. Mr. Gretzinger?
All right. Terrible Habit 17, Run Your Own District Survey. In this situation, a board member, there were conversations going on around school calendar, you know, nothing new to us. This member wanted to be informed about, you know, what people thought in regards to that, so they created their own little survey and sent it out to groups of people that they had connection with. And essentially, the lesson learned is don't usurp the district's authority. You know, as much as they were trying to do a good thing in collecting information, what they ended up doing, according to this book, was creating all kinds of challenging situations where everything from if the board directed the superintendent to do a survey with the community, there might be members of the community that said, I already did one, I'm not responding a second time, to representing only a small group of people's ideas and opinions instead of the larger organization, and also potentially creating some legal issues around people maybe interpreting that survey as something for bargaining or negotiation. So if the board would like to collect additional information, which you absolutely have the right and want to know what folks are thinking, work with the superintendent to do something systematically through the entire system instead of on your own. The other interesting thing on the superintendent's lessons learned, it just stood out to me as the first sentence, you know, superintendents must be especially sensitive to thinking about how Bob was throwing Sarah under, rogue behavior by board members that encroaches on the administrator's domain. You know, I don't think that's been an issue here, which is a really nice change, but.
Other comments? So did he just call you rogue?
I think he suggested that I alluded to Sarah being rogue.
Oh.
Yes.
That was kind of rogue of him to do that.
I know, yeah.
I was trying to stay with the theme of the night, so.
And he's going to say, if you were, too bad. Well, I have Terrible Habit number 18, Arguing With A Hostile Speaker. I don't know why I got assigned this one either. The scenario talks about a board member jumping in and telling Betty that, well, the board president telling her that her time was up and she decided that it wasn't because she had been interrupted by another board member and she wanted that time. Well, there's a reason that we have a policy that says there'll be no comments made by board members. And I think that everyone who sat through multiple, multiple, multiple comments last spring understood the reason that board members do not respond to what individuals say during public comment. The other part of that is that we cannot, as a board, speak to those issues because it's not been listed as an agenda item. And we can only address items listed as agenda items. And we can only address in voting items that have been listed in the agenda as action items. I think that most of you have probably been involved in a meeting or two that we've wanted to talk about something as an agenda item and to vote on it, but could not because it was not listed as an action item. I think that the standards, the Bobcat readiness indicators, were one of those. And that came back through the consent agenda then at another meeting because we could not vote on it when it was presented. I guess the bottom line is we're here to listen. And listen we will. And we need to follow the procedure that we have on the books. Other comments?
This one has been a difficult one for me over the years. Sean is kind of grinning over there. But because oftentimes you'll have someone who comes to speak about something and maybe they make a good point. And maybe you want to have more detail on that point, or maybe you want to study that point, or have someone study that point. And so you want to question that person. And so what I have, if that happens, what I try to do, not always successfully, I try to wait to section 7 dot 04, Meeting Evaluation/Future Agendas. Because B generally says, hey, they may get ideas as things that we want to add to a future agenda. That has seemed to be the right time to bring up, hey, somebody earlier in the meeting brought up something that deserves more discussion, can we put that on a future agenda and have more discussion and analysis about that? So.
And that is appropriate. Oftentimes, when those things are said or those comments are made, no one, including the administrative team, is in a position of preparedness. You know, we might be able to correct what we know to be misinformation, but in terms of presenting on that topic we weren't necessarily aware of ahead of time to the board in the way that you would appreciate clear, concise, and to the point and factual, you know, may take some time for us to do some of that research. So I think to have that discussion at the end of the meeting, as you've alluded to, and then for board leadership to work with me to figure out how best to provide that moving forward is a good route to go.
Other comments on any of our terrible habits this evening? Well, at our next meeting, we have Sean, Nora, Sarah, Karina, Bob, and Paulette up for one of the questions. Thank you all for your participation. No, you're not. We'll try to look ahead and see if we can just say, stay seated. Are you addressing?
Yes.
Okay. Self-insurance plan, Paulette.
Can you open that PowerPoint that's attached? Thank you. So this is the time of the year that we are busy developing the budget for the upcoming school year. And insurance benefits are a big part of that. Our district is self-funded for both our health and our dental plans. And some significant changes have, were implemented for this plan year, which began July 1st in 2019. So in the summer of 2018, we started to take a deep dive into the district's self-insurance fund. This began with the board working together to set some guiding parameters for making decisions regarding this benefit. So this slide will show you what those guiding parameters were. Number one, the board was concerned, board and administration was concerned with retaining better-than-average plan design and contributions. That was really important. We also want our plan designed to incent good consumer behavior. We want to incent greater use of our flex spending account, which we're going to focus more on in the upcoming year. Financially, we want to ensure that the plans are solvent. We also want to reduce the trend of healthcare costs at our district. And of course, we want to ensure compliance across all plans and employee groups. Something else that we've also done is convened a new benefits advisory committee with representation across classifications and buildings. And board members, Niblock and Miller, also participate in that committee. This committee met three times during the month of February. And we learned together a lot about insurance basics, utilization, benefit management, et cetera. We will pick up again this fall with this committee and do a deep dive into the utilization of the first year under our new plan design. You can go back one, sorry. So one of the board's parameters spoke towards the solvency or the health of the plan. So we've shared this information with both the committee and the board. Seven out of the last 10 years, the insurance fund has actually spent more than it has brought in in premiums. Of course, that is not sustainable over time. So over 10 years, the June 30th fund balance has decreased 40% and the cash balance has decreased 31%. So we knew we couldn't afford to not make some significant changes. As a self-insured group, we set our own rates. And as discussed last year at this time, our plans, particularly our family plans, were underpriced. So you can see in this chart, back in fiscal 11, we had cost to the fund of about $5.5 million. And as we look at last year, fiscal 19, we had cost to the fund of about $8.5 million. So that's a significant increase in a short amount of time. Through January of 2020, our fund balance was down to about $1.4 million. So as we looked at renewal options for the 2021 year, some of the things that we looked at were our demographics. Enrollment is up 12.2%. And this is something that the board should be very proud of. As some changes were made for the classified staff for this year, 66% of our eligible paras are now covered by our plan. 71% of eligible food service employees are now covered by our plan. So that's something that this board should be really proud of, to have that many more people now covered. 52% of our contracts are HMO contracts. And about 67% of them are single with 27% family. We have several fixed administrative costs for our group plan. One of those is the specific reinsurance that we purchased through Wellmark. And this year, for next year, our reinsurance is a 20.3% increase. There's also a 2% increase to administrative costs as we have Wellmark be our administrators so they process all the claims and keep everything running behind the scenes. And then we have several contractual liabilities that, right now, amount to about $3 million. The Wellmark claim projections estimate for next year was about 18, well, was 18.5%. What we were concerned about with that is that since we made significant plan design changes in July of 19, they only had three months of data by the time they did their calculations. And so they are still calculating based on old plan designs and not necessarily our current plan design. So what we need for fiscal 21, we're estimating, is about $8 million to run the group health insurance plan. Our current year budgeted premium is about $7.3 million. And so that equates to about a 10% increase for the plan. So our recommendations to the board are no major changes to plan design for 2021. What this means is there won't be any changes in the out-of-pocket maximums, deductibles, copays, coinsurance, that will all stay the same. We really need time, a full year's worth of data, to look at how things are running under the new plan design before we want to make any other significant changes to the plan. Another enhancement that we want to do is add an employee plus one tier to the HMO plan. This third tier was added to the PPO plan back, I think, in fiscal 18, and it was not added to the HMO, or the other two plans in existence at the time. So we want to add this to the HMO so that both plans have the same number of tiers, which is standard. We also want to add coverage for a routine vision exam to both the PPO and the HMO medical plans. And as in the previous slide, recommending a 10% increase for the plan. The change to the routine vision exam going on the medical would mean that we could change our VESUS plan. And our VESUS vision plan, we are not self-insured. We are fully insured. So we buy the policy from them, they set the rates, everything. So what we would do is change the VESUS plan to a materials-only plan. So those that need that coverage for glasses, frames, contacts, and such, would still have that option. But those that don't need the coverage for materials would no longer be expected to pay for it. And on the dental plan, there is no change. We had a 13, I think, 13.7% increase in dental rates for last year. Right now, the plan is running well, so we don't recommend any changes to the premiums or the plan design for dental. The next three slides will show what the rates for the upcoming year would be. On this first slide, we talk about grandfathered employees. And for our new board members, what happened last year when we made significant plan design changes was that those employees that were currently in the plan are considered grandfathered and are still under some of the old practices and cost sharing. So we call those people the grandfathered people. So going forward, our recommendation is for the district to still pay 100% of both the single HMO and the single PPO for our grandfathered employees. We also had a $900 district contribution towards the family plan, and that will remain the same in this proposal for next year. If you go to the next slide, this is the rates for the non-grandfathered people. So those are the people that we hired on July 1st, 2019, or after. Or they could have been hired before that, but they didn't take insurance, so they just came on insurance in fiscal 19. So for those non-grandfathered people, the district has kind of what we call an anchor plan, and that would be the HMO single, which is the lowest-cost single plan provided by the district. And then if employees want to buy up into added coverage and such, then they pay the difference for that. And again, under the non-grandfathered, there is not that contribution towards the family coverage that is being phased out as it is for the grandfathered people. Does that make sense? The last slide, the recommended rates, this is for dental. Again, no change there for dental. For vision, this would be the vision rates for materials only. I need to add that on to that slide. I need to add that on to that slide. So if people want coverage for vision materials only, they would be responsible for paying for 100% of that. And then I had given at one of our last insurance benefits advisory committee meeting, we talked a lot about if we're still better-than-average, you know, compared to other districts and such. So what I've put in front of you, because I just got it compiled late Friday night, are some comparisons to just a handful of districts. Last year, you might recall, we did a large, in-depth survey of several other districts. I think it was about 30 districts. This year, I simply reached out to about five large districts and asked them for their current plans that are offered, the cost, and simply looking at the out-of-pocket maximum, which is the most important thing you want to look at. So as you can see by looking at these numbers, Marshalltown is still, can still be considered Does anybody have any questions on any of this?
Let me, I want to compare, I don't know the slide number, but it's renewal considerations. You note 20.3% increase to specific reinsurance and 2% increase to administrative costs?
Yes.
And on the next slide, there's a Wellmark claim projection estimate of 18.5% increase.
Yep.
I understand the difference between a claim projection and specific reinsurance, but is there any connection to those numbers at all?
No, those are two completely different numbers. So the specific reinsurance is kind of insurance within insurance. So we actually purchased that policy from Wellmark for the reinsurance amount. So we're only taking on the risk to a certain point, and then the reinsurance kicks in. So there's, that was the increase to that premium that we paid to Wellmark. The claims, the claim projection estimate is they look at, I think it's like 24 months of claims, and actuarially project those claims through to, you know, mature claims and...
And the 10% increase for the plan is essentially a difference between the estimated-needed FY '21 premium and the current year budgeted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the proposed enhancements and rates as presented for the self-insured health and dental plan and the fully insured VESUS vision plan?
So moved.
Second.
Untied Heitman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 5-0. Are you doing this Google or is...
Amy, you want to speak to the next?
Hi.
Hello.
Last time I was up here, I got up and down several times, so I'll try to just hang out here for a second. I'm, in the next few board meetings, I will propose that we go out for a competitive bid for our replacement cycle Chromebooks for next year, 2020-21. And in the meantime, they're upping the price on the management license for these Chromebooks. So a few vendors have offered us the current price if we purchase the license only before March 9. So that's why we bring this to you, because we estimate that we'll want to purchase about 1,380 Chromebooks. We can purchase the licenses ahead of time, and we would not purchase them, then it would not be included in the RFP. And by doing so, we'd save about $18,000 if we could do this before March 9.
When are you going to buy the 1,300 Chromebooks?
Well, July 1, hopefully.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, the proposal for RFP will be here shortly.
Just a reminder, we have half a million dollars set aside in the save budget every year for Chromebook replacement, so this would come out of that annual budget. But it would be $18,000 less than it otherwise would.
It's nice to get a break once in a while.
Yes.
Any other questions for Amy or Paulette? They have a motion to approve the purchase of 1,380 Chromebook, Chromebook Google licenses from CDWG at a cost of $34,500.
I'll move it again. Second.
Untied Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to board policies.
So we have one policy that's up for first reading. It's the policy 401.9 on employee political activity. As you'll remember, we presented that, and then we made a slight adjustment in the language to provide clarity on this, that it's speaking to political activity while under contract. I would recommend that the board approve the first reading and waive the second reading.
Questions? May I have a motion to adopt 401.9 and waive the second reading?
I'll move.
Second.
Faltus Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 5-0.
In the initial review, I'm going to start with the third and fourth listed policy, 401.1 and 401.2, equal employment, opportunity, and employee conflict of interest. In each of these cases, I'm recommending that we mark these as reviewed. There was a slight change in 401.1, where it was simply putting Dr. Nora Ryan's name in, in lieu of Dr., or Mr. Spaghetti's.
Any problems with that?
Board policy, 104, anti-bullying, anti-harassment policy, as well as 104.R1. You guys have seen these a number of times that have been on the board for the last three and a half years. Part of our regular review cycle, we reviewed them. We reviewed them when we had our Equity Site visit. IASB has recommended a whole-scale change, so essentially, they've created a new policy to replace the old policy. And the primary reason was they wanted to make sure that this policy didn't sound as it did in the past, like it was speaking primarily to students, but it spoke to everyone, students and employees. So those would come back for a first reading at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Schutte at this point?
402.2, child abuse reporting. There were some changes in the law to have the mandatory reporter training, which is more significant than it used to be, and to have it, the training take place more frequently, every three years instead of five years. So that would come back. Those changes were based on changes in the law.
Any questions at this point? Okay.
403.3, communicable diseases and employees. We've made some adjustments there as well regarding the title of the lead nurse, some small additions. This would come back for a first reading as well. 604.3 would be a new policy on our books. It's been a policy, it's just a simple paragraph, basically, that IASB has, speaking to the Talented Gifted program, or for our purposes, XLP. Matt has asked me to have us adopt that because in future meetings, he'll be bringing forward some administrative regulations and possibly some exhibits that would support this policy relative to our XLP programming.
Any questions at this point? Okay.
And Bob has the next two.
Motorized vehicles on school property appears to be eliminated.
Yeah, there was a... Are we making a motion to delete?
I am doing that, yeah. I'm still new. You're still new, don't pick on me.
Second. Untied Heitman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion is carried.
I would note that the policy in the series 900 on smoking and tobacco use on school district facilities has been altered to update the section of Iowa code.
Actually, yeah, we haven't made any changes to it, so we'd recommend marking that as reviewed. We actually reviewed that within the past two years as a result of some advocacy to change some language, so it applied all tobacco products, not just smoking. So it came up naturally as part of our review cycle, but we should be able to just mark that as reviewed.
Is that agreeable to all?
I'm motioning to adopt that.
I'm good.
Alrighty. Any items of note and communication, Mr. Sotters?
So in accordance with goal number two in the marketing, excuse me, the communications and marketing plan, I am talking with Dr. Ryan and EHR department about kind of doing a revamp of our staff directory, which would include adding information like advanced degrees, because I know that many of our staff members and teachers have advanced degrees, and I think that's something we ought to be advertising about our district. So that specifically, as well as perhaps giving them a chance to put down a small paragraph or a short bio if they choose to, and let the community know more about them as people. I think that's incredibly important, you know, especially since our teachers are interacting so much with parents and stakeholders in the community. So that's my update for you guys.
Any questions for Adam? Looking at the reminders, we have a special board meeting on March 24. Hoping that the city meeting on the 23rd goes very well. Spring break is March 9th to the 13th. Lenahan will be our next school showcase at the 16th meeting. And Dr. Ryan, have all of the board members been contacted about negotiations, if they're involved?
Please.
Okay. And Acer meeting on March 16th. We have a board curricular visit coming up at Woodbury on the 31st. And I get the next policies. That's what you would have said, right, Mike? Looking at committee reports, were any board members present at the Equity meeting?
Yeah, I was here.
Would you, anything to share?
The bulk of the meeting was spent with Eric Gazlinger giving a presentation on homeless students. It was, it was a really incredible presentation that I think, if you have the chance to talk to Eric about it or see it, take advantage, because it was eye-opening, so.
In this district, it was about this district?
Yeah, and more, and it was, and about some of the changes that have come about with changes in the law and how those impact us with kids that maybe you wouldn't think are homeless, but are actually classified as homeless under the law.
For example, any student and/or family that's doubled up with other families or other family members would be technically classified as homeless versus, you know, maybe people's initial visions going to sleeping in cars or, you know, not having a shelter and that sort of thing, so. A lot of our discussion was around continuing to work hard, particularly at the building level, to identify the number, accurately the number of students that would meet that definition, because there are McKenty-Vento funds that are available from the federal government as a result of those numbers.
The two board members who were at the CIAC meeting are not here. Lisa, is there anything you want to share?
Right, so Karina and Jan are both here with them. They left to come back here for a meeting. We had about 13 people there, and we reviewed the community survey feedback, the teacher survey feedback, and the student survey feedback in three groups to see if we missed anything in those seven indicators. And we did. We missed a few things that the community thought were important, including quite a few things about leadership and finance, financial awareness, I suppose. So we are reading again in April to incorporate those back into the seven somehow. And then we have to leave in the newly recommended social emotional learning competencies that the state is highly suggesting that we implement and monitor these mechanisms. So that's April 4.
Internal Communications did on Friday?
It did. So a lot of the things that we've, some of the things that we've talked about tonight were included in that. There was discussion about the handbook and readiness to go before the board. As annually occurs, HR is going to be working with MAA to affirm a seniority list within the district. Nora reported out, again, about the number of new subs that we've been hiring monthly, so that was encouraging. We talked a little bit about the insurance committee and just in general about information that's coming forward there that you heard tonight. We had some continued discussion about student behaviors and what are, and had some discussion around particularly, you know, what are ways that we can more effectively communicate between special ed and gen ed in order to best ensure that all teachers are on top of the accommodations, modifications, and such that need to happen in order to help special needs students be successful. Talked about the upcoming training that Matt Kretzinger was able to work out right here in Marshalltown this summer to try to move our CPS training to more people. And then there were general discussion about just morale. This is, you know, a tough stretch for everybody in January and February, heading to spring break, trying to get to spring break. You know, it's been dark, it's been cold. We haven't had, thankfully, the snow that we usually get. But just talking in general about morale, we talked a lot about, you know, it's not the board's responsibility in and of itself, or the superintendent's responsibility in and of itself, but everybody has a role in helping to figure out ways that we can up the morale. We do, as a board, or most of the board is aware, most, more years than not, the last couple of years, we've done culture surveys of all of our employees that has focused on job satisfaction and teacher engagement. You'll hear a presentation towards the end of this year on measuring, I think it's 15 different indicators around that topic from a... different indicators around that topic from a district-wide perspective. The first two years I was here, we measured it, wrote action plans at the building and department levels for how we could improve things, communications, morale, et cetera. Last year, we took a year off of it mainly because it's expensive, and we felt like we could continue to march forward with the action plans we had with some internal tweaking. It always worries me, because what measure, what gets measured gets done. And so, I'm, you know, going to be very interested to see where those results lie. Obviously, at the end of the year last year also, we had, as has been alluded to at this meeting, some concern relative to changes that we had made through collective bargaining and changes we had made through insurance, so whether, you know, how those might have impacted the survey had we conducted it last year. We're not, you know, we, we don't know, or we won't know. But we're definitely going to be excited to resurvey our employees. That'll be going out almost immediately upon the return from spring break, and then the survey will close in conjunction with our professional development day, for which many of our employees will probably take the survey during that time that we give them there on March 30th. We also just had some open discussion about, you know, things that we can continue to do or do better relative to promoting our district and attracting high-quality teachers. And Nora updated the group about current and upcoming career fairs that we're going to be involved with, that oftentimes she, she and, or the HR director and other people go to. Matt, I know, has spent a lot of time to recruiting with colleges and universities that, in making them aware of positions that we have open in the special education arena particularly. Probably the biggest thing that we talked a little bit about was, just had some initial discussion around the potential of adjusting start times for school under the pretense of trying to gain more minutes, particularly at the elementary and intermediate level. Right now, the way our school days are structured, the student contact, you know, the contract day would stay the same, eight to four or what have, but the actual student contact time differs a little bit depending on whether you go to elementary, or whether you're at intermediate and middle, or whether you're at high school. So, the suggestion was to increase student contact time at the elementary school to mirror what we have at the secondary school. There may have been a slight adjustment in the high school, too, in order to get all of the centers to match. I think part of the differences, it wasn't so much, certain students needed more time than others, but I think it was an unfortunate byproduct of our ability to transport kids to and from. And so, there were kind of staggered times, particularly at the beginning of the school day. And at the end of the day, in order to accommodate the form of transportation that we had going on when it was not direct, as much direct transportation as we have now. But now that we've got a lot more dedicated buses, that's less an, an issue, I believe. So, we're going to continue to investigate this, but, and in the event that we do make a recommendation, it'll be coming before you in a presentation format at a meeting and then, and asking for action format at another meeting down the road. Is there anything I missed that you think of?
What have we done this evening to improve the education of students in the Marshalltown
We adopted handbooks, and that's been a long-time project.
Long time.
Yes. So, that was good to do. And it was good to hear, you know, from Dr. Stevenson on where things are in the curriculum adoption cycle. That's good information.
We saved on you on Chromebook licenses. Go.
We don't have any Chromebooks to weigh up the licenses.
No. 18 grand is 18 grand.
We got to see the bowling trophy in the bowling field.
Absolutely.
Big, big banner, too.
Big banner, too.
Oh, yeah.
Any items for future agendas? Well, before we go into our closed, closed, and exempt, my quote for this evening comes from Dr. Seuss, whose birthday it is today. Dr. Seuss says, "Children want the same things we want: to laugh, to be challenged, to be entertained, and delighted." Let's, we don't have our family.
I saw Eric back there.
Let's, let's see if we can do them first.
Take a bathroom break?
Matt, can you see if the band, if her base is...
You know, he also said, after that light, he thinks that... Which is, I've tried to...
He did. He also encouraged... Too quick.
Yeah.